There you go.
Okay, so make a note that Aaron is absent. And then you'll try to get ahold of him, right? Take your hat off, Kyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda.
So good.
Second.
Did she get that?
I'm going back to me.
Perfect. Anymore? I like that. You're learning to take initiative and control. Seriously, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I heard six zero. Okay. Chris, you're up.
We're gonna start with just kind of an update on applicants for all of you. So far, you should have received information on five applicants, five completed applications. So we sent you some information on those. We have two more that are totally completed that I'll be sending to Elizabeth to put out to you tomorrow. And then we have five that we can see in process. And then we've had a couple others that have been acquired. So we're thinking by, you know, it seems like at the end of the process, sometimes people are last minute putting their applications in. And so we're expecting more. We think we'll have a nice group of applicants to bring to you. So you'll have some good choices to be able to make that. So that's where we're at now.
Now, one of the five is off the market, though. Because the Bowling Green guy took Troy. That he applied to.
I hadn't heard that until this evening, too.
Oh, man.
So a guy from Bowling Green, Mark, I think.
Matt Fredrickson.
Fredrickson.
So he's off the market.
I didn't know that. And you know the pure more updated than I am on that.
Yeah, so we have four active ones.
Two more that I'll give you tomorrow.
So we have six active.
Six completed, and then five other ones that are in action on those. And then another, like, I've had a couple phone calls that aren't any of those eleven now. So I guess I think we'll have a nice group for you to choose from when we come back next time.
Have you guys heard of any names or anyone we should reach out to?
I've heard one, but I think he told me that she was going to apply.
Okay.
You can get it from them later.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at.
Well, if anyone, if you know someone.
Well, you know, he's always been offered the opportunity to rescind his reh暴风.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah. We got a short form applicant for your application for you, right?
Don't tell him I said this, but he's a pretty good guy.
Thank you, Chris. All right, seriously, continue.
We've got the information from the survey. We also have information in front of you. Your specific results as a board. So you might want to compare the two. Let's see, let's talk about the survey.
Yeah, I usually like to start with the board survey and see if there's anything on there that you were surprised about or just kind of. Here's, you know, you can see where we have the summary of your feedback. And, you know, it kind of tells a story of a district that's looking like it's got some potential to have some growth in the near future. And in order to accommodate that growth, you're thinking about facilities. You're thinking about how that's going to happen instructionally. And some of the things that you're good with is we got control over our finances. And it feels like a pretty healthy story. And it feels like the board is in consensus with their idea of we need to be ready for the future. Is that kind of what you're feeling from that piece? Said, as you look at that, or if you look at the pieces that I always find interesting is the advice part. Is there anything that stands out at you or, you know, maybe one of your colleagues put down that you put down that you feel strongly about? I guess I should back up a little bit and let you know this is how we compose questions for the applicants. And we're trying to customize our questions to meet your needs and to meet the needs of the district to suit those kinds of things that are unique to this district that we could be asking those questions on.
And to, and so board, and then we take the community's voice forward throughout the process. I don't know if you guys have talked about having a few stakeholders be a part of the interview or having a stakeholder group interview the final act.
We just talked about what we're gonna do with the middle school and the final ones.
Right.
Where Chris was gonna drive them around the district.
Excellent.
That's all we talked about.
Okay.
Unless someone has a different ideas about what they want to do.
Every district does.
I think that's what we kind of settled on.
Excellent. Excellent.
I think it was gonna be staff or whatever that was gonna. And then the issue was getting the results back over here.
Gotcha. We can definitely help with that and set up an electronic survey to help facilitate that. We asked that in that setting, in that interview session, that, you know, they're not picking their top ones. They're just giving the information of the strengths and maybe challenges that they see as opposed to them linking them. That's up to you guys, so.
So quickly, to the Board of Education. So there's four. Heidi, if you look in the board packet, there's a Wright City School Board Feedback Survey feedback.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. So on that first, what are the strengths or points of pride for the Wright City School District? If, as a board, if we had to pick one or two of those, which one or two would we think, as a board, we come together?
Why only one or two?
Well, because if we have to limit questions to eight or 10 questions, and you got, you know, if you got to do two, four, six, eight here, you know, maybe three, you know. Because obviously, we're not gonna get quite initial questions on all these. And if you're gonna use these to help base our questions on, then from a board, I mean, we gotta go through the stakeholder thing, too, and see where the compare and contrast is and kind of, you know, make sure we get questions from the stakeholders' perspective.
And there's some overlap in these, too. So that makes it to me a little bit easier.
That's a good observation. There's definitely overlap. Even within that little section of, you know, you could overlap the strong sense of community and the small-town atmosphere kind of thing could be an overlap. And there's definitely overlap between the two surveys if you look through both of those.
Well, from my perspective, I think, you know, in the past, when we've been, and where we've been successful is that we've looked at fiscal responsibility. I think we need, from my perspective, we need a superintendent who can develop a budget, a realistic budget, and then adhere us to it. So at the end of the day, we need to be fiscally responsible with our money. And then the second one, I think, is academics. So because we could have, from my perspective, again, this is just Austin talking, but we could have all the money in the world, and if our academics suck, it ain't gonna make a hell of a difference. Why we have all this money? And when our academics suck, and then where we need to, you know, academically, we need to be where we need to be. So, I mean, that, from my perspective on the kind of this first one, that's kind of where I'm at. And then the third, and then the corollary to all that is how do you maintain academics? Well, you maintain good staff. I mean, so, you know, you know, there's, the two, overall two things are dedicate to our student success and financials. And then how do you do that? Well, I mean, you gotta have a good, I mean, like you saw in the paper today or last week where we got, you know, our academics are doing good and a little better than what they were three, four, or five years ago. And it's because of the teachers and the staff here. So we need, so that's what makes that happen. And so that's kind of where I'm at.
So I'm with you on academics, but I just, I don't know, I haven't been through this process before. But a superintendent absolutely has to be fiscally competent. And we're not a district that is in a fiscal crisis right now. And based on the last couple of years and what we need to add as we're growing as a community, I think the strong sense of community and community support is paramount in this interview. And then having demonstrated that before. I'm not discounting the fiscal need, the fiscal responsibility, but are we gonna be a superintendent of the school district? That just, that should be the expectation that should come with that. Unless I'm just totally ignorant to all of your peers across the state, Dr. Berger.
That's true. Well, yeah, but.
Some of them are.
Yeah, are better than others, but as a district, do we need the most fiscally competent superintendent in the state of Missouri?
Yes, that's, in my book, that's way up the top. I mean, academic, I'm agreeing with Austin. It'll change. Those are the two biggest things that really, and I've been through this.
Yeah, and I. And I understand that, but our books are good. We're not a rural, we're not a super rural district that is.
Can I step in?
Yes.
Our books are good right now. You are right. But we have a lot of growth to balance that is not going to be supportive with our current tax base unless managed properly. So I understand, Kyle, I totally agree with you. We're in a good spot right now. But we have a lot of growth ahead of us that we want to stay in that good spot. And fiscal responsibility is literally number two next to frickin' making sure kids are educated. So I kind of agree with Marion Austin on this one.
So I'm hearing that strong ability to connect with the community and tell that story and keep the story out in front as well. So why are we building these facilities? How are we, you know, I see in both surveys about maintaining staff and competing against other districts. Like, what are your ideas on recruiting and maintaining staff, those kinds of things?
So neither Dave nor Beth chimed in on that. Beth or Dave, you wanna chime in on that?
I'll go. And Kyle, to your point, I think, especially Marion Austin, have seen superintendents that struggle on the CFO side of things where I've seen a little bit of it on my time as the board, but I haven't been on it longer than. So I really don't think that you can say that all Dr. Berger's colleagues are versed in the financial side of things. So, yeah, you know, again, after seeing the differences in superintendent, you know, and knowing Dr. Berger's background of the financial side of his expertise, it's really been a drastic change to some of the leaders that we've had. And I think that is a high quality, one of the first qualities, I guess, I'd say, that we look at for in this program.
I agree with what I've said, and just logically speaking, I'm aligned with what you said, kind of the way you laid that out with those two or three things.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, the opportunities for improvement. Heidi, you wanna go first?
I'll hold up.
Okay, so my goal is to have this done by about 6:30, so we spend the last half hour on stakeholder stuff, okay? So let's time box it like that. So anyway, so I think, again, I'll go first, just to get the conversation going. Well, as when I read this, basically, the construction projects, you know, we're talking about, you know, if you look at what we're gonna talk about Thursday in our five-year plan that's in there, you'll see where there's many different opportunities about what we want to do in terms of, you know, adding another four rooms to East versus, you know, finishing off the high school or whatever. So I think the individual's gonna have, I think that's gonna be a challenge. And whomever we end up hiring, they're gonna either have to know what's going on, because we're a small district and we don't have that particular construction person, or Jeremy's gonna be taking on a lot of that responsibility. And again, I think, and I'm the one that put the middle school academics, I believe. So again, I think we really, really need somebody who can connect with the middle school parents. And because, you know, we're going to the evidence-based over there, and our communication hasn't been the best in terms of rolling it out. So I think we're gonna need somebody who can help us at the middle school academics.
But is it really the responsibility of the superintendent to bypass their assistant superintendent curriculum and instruction? And then bypass their middle school principal to spearhead that? Or is that superintendent be well-versed in improving academics in general? I think middle school is too concentrated and in the weeds.
That's fair. I guess what I was going with it is, if you look at what he does for his job, I mean, on all the hats he has to wear, because, you know, you know, we're a growing district, but we don't have the five or six assistant superintendents for him to do a workout to. You know, he's doing a lot of that work. I mean, he's in the meetings for the high school, you know, whereas if he was in a bigger district, he'd have an assistant being at those meetings. So that's why I'm saying that, you know, when we hired him specifically, we drilled him on construction because we knew this was coming. So that's something, then that, I guess that's just why I mentioned that. But it's fair about your second comment. So Beth, you got anything to add?
No, I mean.
Drop time, Mr. Curzio. Elizabeth to work on while you guys roll along, if that's okay.
Yeah, again, a lot of overlap in this one. But, I mean, what I'm seeing here, and what I've felt personally myself, on the incoming growth and the staff challenges that's gonna bring, resources, our buildings, and all of the new superintendent is gonna be facing, that's top for me. And I did not put anything in this related to the middle school performance, but I was thinking it, and I thought, I knew you would. But that's definitely top of mind, too.
Dave?
I don't have anything new to add.
Mary?
Not really anything new. I just think they're gonna have to be. They're gonna have, again, have to know all about construction because we're taking over and we're right in the middle of a project. I think that's gonna be a challenge for them. So that's, that can be a big challenge for them. And then, of course, ever since I've been on the board, it's been growth. You know, we're always concerned about the growth because we're always continually growing and growing. But this may be more of a jump with the new businesses coming into town and new industries. So anyway, those are my concerns. And then I think the middle school just falls into that academic, you know, academic concern. We want to keep our academics on the upward slope. So and I think that middle school thing, that just falls into that, but that goes for all of our.
Kyle?
Only thing I'd add to task force is attendance. And I know from a state standpoint, it's not that many endpoints, but our attendance is bad. It's real bad when compared to all the schools around us. I mean, it's right in the day.
Heidi, you be joining us? Heidi, you wanna add anything to the, what are the current challenges or opportunities?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we were the last person to speak, so we're moving on. All right. The next one was, you want anything to this, or is this going like you want it to?
You're fine, you're fine. No, you guys need to talk it out. Just out of curiosity, who do you do your bonds with?
Staple. What advice would you give the next superintendent? Kyle, will you go first on this one?
I mean, I'm gonna hit on it again because I still think it's critically important, but maintaining strong community relationships and utilizing the resources in our community that are present, that we may not be capitalizing that capacity currently.
Mary?
I just have to say, keep on top of the construction. It seems to be ever-changing. And personal development for academics.
Dave?
Mine would be flexible. You know, like you said before, we're not a large enough district where we have six assistant superintendents. So we have, you gotta wear many hats here. And, you know, I think everything is important, but you gotta be flexible. You gotta be a curriculum guy, you gotta be a financial guy, you gotta be a disciplinarian, you gotta be all those folks. So my advice would be be flexible option.
That's a good point. It's a great point. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, my thing, I'm gonna go with Kyle on this one. You know, it takes a village to educate a kid. We cannot educate a kid in a vacuum. I think, you know, we got athletics boosters, we have athletic, we have band boosters, we have, you know, the churches, you know, where they can do things, you know, and we draw bloom gold. We draw on all those different community resources to help us and aid us in doing what we need to do. For instance, in our robotics, we have a retired individual comes in and does his thing. So I think this, if we're gonna ask a question, what advice or someone on that is like, how would you utilize community resources to better the educational environment for Wright City or something like that? I mean, that would be the question I would ask based upon what Kyle said. And Heidi, you wanna go last?
I actually don't have much to say on that one. I mean, I agree on the community resources, definitely, but I can also follow what everyone else is saying. So flexibility, I think you just, y'all hit both of it right there. Community resources, flexibility, period.
Okay. And the last one is the three most important personal traits. Beth, I'll let you go first on this one.
I mean, these are all great, right? We want all of these. I think ability to bring out success in others is a really good one as we think about leadership development and succession plans within the district. I think that's a really important one.
I'll go second on that. I agree with what Beth said, but again, strong ethics and integrity. I think, you know, he's made mistakes, I make mistakes, we all make mistakes. But, you know, if you're making your decisions based upon moral ethics, I mean, they talk to us about this at work, right? You know, we have a moral exigna. We have a moral compass. We know what's right. And we don't cut corners because at the end of the day, if you cut a corner and someone, and you will get caught. I mean, then there's hell to pay. So you need to have strong ethics because even if you, even if something comes out like, and you don't want to deal with it, you have to deal with it. And then integrity. I mean, you have to, you mean, that is, that is key. Because once you lose trust, you're toast. I mean, and to his point about through the pandemic, you know, he made some unpopular choices.
Had to.
Well, and he did, which is fine. He made some unpopular choices, but at the end of the day, but he rooted his things in integrity and everything else and said, this is why I'm doing it, it was data-driven and everything else. And that's, and that's why, how we were able to work through it.
I'd say in the shape that the superintendent is making everyone happy, he's probably not doing his job. He's probably, yeah, talking out of both sides of the coin.
But to me, ethics and integrity are, is what I do at work, it's what they make, and it's what they tell me. And I think that extends to.
Oh, yeah.
What we do. Dave?
I don't really have anything to add. Do you not think all them characteristics are important?
I will add strong communication skills only because we've seen situations where we've messed up. And so I think, you know, i.e. evidence-based rollout. I mean, we could have done a better job of communicating. So I would say that would be something that we could do. I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
Well, I think that third bullet of the ability to bring out success in others, strong ethics and integrity, exactly what you said. My second thing is the approachable, accessible, and welcoming demeanor. Because for, I can give an example of this weekend. I was at the, volunteered at the Breakfast with Santa. And there was one of our teachers there who I was talking to. And she was talking about how much she hated to see Chris leave. And she said, this is the first superintendent that I have felt that was very welcoming and approachable. And she said, that meant a lot to me and to the other teachers, that no one, you know, you didn't have any fears about, you could say what you wanted to say, and very approachable. And she said, that meant a lot. So that's an example of that. You know, I've had other teachers telling the same thing, and parents. So that, those are my two big things.
Heidi?
I do agree that approachable has been something that has come up in more and more conversations that I have been having with the community. And, but I will always be ability to bring out success in others. I mean, that's, that's kind of the basis of the job a little bit. So I'm good with either of those and also communication. But I really don't have an opinion except that approachable has been something that has came up when people have compared Chris to past superintendents, and I want to keep that going.
Yeah, I'll just echo, you know. Best leaders are able to make others successful and welcoming demeanor is important for top boss in charge.
Okay, so that concludes the school board section of this. Do you have anything you want to add to this about, I mean, does this kind of like?
I just want to make a quick observation of you had that talk about helping others be successful. And then any advice, support and nurture the team, celebrate success, and address questions of the board. I think those kind of feed into one another well. So that's something I'm making a note of it. That's, comes up in my mind, at least, something I hear you talk about that's important to all of you. I'm ready to move on, sorry. I always feel like I have to say something.
All right, I'm gonna let you all lead the stakeholder survey portion of this because you know, you've done a better analysis than I have in terms of where the district has, and the board are congruent and where the patrons and the school board is not congruent. So I'm gonna let you go ahead and lead this portion of the program.
So we're gonna start with the strengths?
Yeah, just start, start like we did and just go through the fore and we'll figure it out from there.
Some things you can see right away are overlapped. So do we wanna just go down and have each, you kind of look like you just did with the.
That'll work.
Yeah.
Just make sure you do round robin, so the first person, that was first.
Okay. Kyle, you wanna start?
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff here. You know, we've definitely been data-driven in our effort to approve test scores. It seems to be working, so I think that's something that we probably need to continue. And then. It's a paragraph, so it needs to be paraphrased, but the second to last on, you know, student achievements are universal goal. We have community support for passing our most recent props. And we have a highly functional school. So.
Heidi, did you wanna add anything to that?
Heidi?
You're pumped up?
I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't hear him say my name, and then I was pumping it. No, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. Mary?
No, I agree with the second to the last paragraph there. Whoever wrote that, that's good. Yeah, might want to cut down a little bit, but it sounds good.
Beth, anything?
No, I don't have nothing to add.
It's always nice to read the good stuff, isn't it? Beth?
I don't have anything to add, just as a general question. So we had 126 total responses. And then on the specific comments, I suppose your approach would be just to kind of pull out the ones that overlap and summarize those, or?
We look for themes.
Okay.
Try and find that over, over often.
Okay.
And then combine those together.
Okay, all right. And so there's really closely. Okay, all right. And so this really closely aligns with what we, we had put in our board survey.
The goal really summarizes those themes that we're seeing in comments too.
Right, all right. Thank you.
The only thing I saw different here than what, we, we never touched on student safety. If you look at what, what we did, if I remember right, you know, we didn't touch on student safety.
Sure.
So I think that's something that we need to think about. You know, here, it says here, we provide a safe haven for our students and ensure that their basic needs are met. I think that's more of, I don't know if that's a social emotional statement or not, or versus a, you know, a physical safety issue. I mean, I, I don't know what I'm getting, I don't know what I'm getting out of that.
Or more of your Maslow stuff.
Pardon me?
Maslow, more of your, your physical safety and basic needs, and then trying to push them to intellectually hire.
So, I mean, I think that would be, you know, something I might wanna talk, talk to a potential candidate about is, you know, what, what's their definite, I mean, student safety and stuff like that, what they, you know, what their opinion is on it, what their, you know, in terms of, you know, I don't know if this gets into the social emotional aspect of it or not, because, you know, there was an SEL focus above that we didn't really talk about.
You know, mental health has become a bigger, bigger issue every year, and then schools are doing more and more of that. How do we do, do we want to want that, so?
So I don't know if, you know, if based upon what I'm hearing there, if we need to think about a safety question?
Sure.
That, that we might, based upon what the community's provided us? That would be something I would think about, we should talk about.
What about a bullying question?
Well, I think you could.
How do you handle a bullying, bullying situation?
Wouldn't that be part of safety, or?
It would be.
And, and again, that's, that's a whole, the mental health issue, you know, that really touches on that, and, and, you know, safety plays into that as well.
So more around the social emotional support and how the district is supporting students?
How is superintendent?
Well, if you, well, if you read ahead, you know, you know, I'm looking at the challenges for the district, and I don't see bullying as a, as something that came up as a particular challenge for the district.
Well, it, it was mentioned a lot in the last employment survey.
It was for the employment survey, but in terms of what we're looking for in new superintendent, it's, it's not listed here. Now, whether or not that was, we didn't get enough respondents, or we got a small sample size, or whatever, but, you know, that might be, you know, maybe, maybe what we, what we ask is a, a safety question. One of the triggers that we listen for is what their response is to bully, bullying. Because that right there, to me, would be, okay, you know, a student needs to feel safe in school. And then one of the triggers, I probably shouldn't be saying this in an open session because if they're listening, and they know I answered the question, I digress. But, you know, that would be one of, one of the check, checkmarks to put on an answer is, hey, you know, they talked about bullying, they talked about that's part of student safety and stuff like that, and maybe that's how we tie that in.
So we're gonna put some questions together for you to look at before we interview, we'll knock something around with that theme in there, and then you can give us feedback on that.
Heidi, you got anything else?
I'm here, and no, more good. Thank you.
So, everybody got a chance to respond to that? We go to the challenge page, the next page. And Mary, you wanna start?
Well, like I said, and this has been, in every, every superintendent that we've looked, looked for in the past, you know, I, I think, it's always the challenges is gonna be the growth. And that's always been the challenge. The other challenge is.
And that's a good thing, I have to tell you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Our other challenge is retaining teachers.
Cross the state, that's huge.
Because we're, we're a rural area, and just a little ways down the highway, you can, you know, so we, that's always been a challenge for Wright City. My father-in-law was on the school board 50 years ago, and that was a challenge for him too. So that's always gonna be a challenge for us.
Until you're not a rural area anymore, it keeps creeping this way, right?
We'd still like to consider ourselves.
Got it. Growth and we touch, we touch on the teachers. And Dave?
I mean, I, when I, when I look at this section of challenges, to me, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm, I have a blind eye to it, but it looks like some of these answers don't necessarily reflect our district. Like, maybe the, the communication or the no isn't there. To me, I would think, you know, like, one of the, one of the answers here to the question is more challenging curriculum for our high school students. Me with our, or I think with our, I'm gonna call it advanced placement, but where you can go get your associate's degree while you're still in high school.
Right.
I think that should be plenty challenging curriculum for our high school students. So our, our patrons are the people that's answering these surveys, just not in form of the opportunities we have. And then, you know, another answer, teacher turnover, sometimes due to contracts not being renewed. I mean, yes, it's turnover, but we don't want these folks here, so I don't really call that turnover. And, and another one, more opportunities for advancement and challenging higher performing students. Are we really not, do we really not have those opportunities for our students? Or do these people that answer these questions really don't know what the district is providing?
Well, some of these look like a teacher, like an internal staff member answered, internal communication holding all staff members. To me, that sounds like, that screams someone internally.
It does, it does. So that's why I'm, I'm not looking at a specific answer on here. I'm looking at, as a whole, it looks to me like, like some of it is either misguided or answered with trying to get a result that those people wish. Maybe, maybe I'm.
And when you, when you ask open-ended things like that for people to put that, you're, you're going to get some of that. I think the challenge for a board then is to take a critical eye to those kinds of comments and do exactly what you're doing. Is there a grain of truth in that? Really, what we're looking at is more of a, how did those come into a theme? And that's probably where the communication part came up for us.
True. I mean, this may lead you to want to look for a superintendent who has experience with, you know, trade schools and offering that kind of curriculum, you know, understands the importance of dual credit and advanced placement. That may be from those questions, quality that would be ideal in a superintendent.
But, and then?
I, I did notice that there were two comments here on internal communication that are clearly from a staff perspective. And assuming that those are themes, and maybe there was more of that in the survey, and, and I think that was something we saw in the climate survey. So just kind of reinforces what we already talked about earlier as far as qualities in a superintendent, that internal communications is, is really important.
So, most of this is congruent with what we came up with. I think the two big ones that, where I think where the community is, is speaking to us on this one, is A, more opportunities for advance and challenging. To me, that's, what can you do with a gifted program? I mean, that, that's kind of what I'm reading how that is, that, that's, it's gifted program. And then the ELL, not getting the resources they need. I mean, that, again, that goes back to our CSEP, where, you know, that's, that's something we're working on in our CSEP. So I think a question around, you know, something, you know, something associated with our CSEP, I think, and that's where an individual candidate could, could touch on, you know, because that, that's where our needs are. I think that's kind of where a candidate, if they look at our CSEP and give us something about that, that would be, you know, something I'd check off and kind of look on this page and see where we're at. That's all I have to say.
Do you think something like the diverse needs of learners would kind of cover some of those?
There needs to be.
Hey, I think Heidi wanted to say something. Go ahead, Heidi.
No, I just, I'm coming from a, I mean, you guys are on the same page as myself, and maybe I'm wrong. When they walk in the door, I expect them to pretty much know our CSEP, right? So, am I crazy?
No.
They should know that about us.
But, but you would expect, though, an answer to, because, you know, the CSEP is, is the needs of the district. It's the challenges of the district. And a lot of the stuff that's on here is already articulated in our CSEP.
Very good.
And so you would hope that.
That your district has it, just so you know that.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm just thinking, maybe we have a, I, I agree that that's important. I just, maybe more than one question on our CSEP that also applies to other things. Because if you're showing up for an interview for this type of job, and you don't know our CSEP pretty dang well, I'm, I'm gonna question.
Well, that would be, that would be a way to disqualify them as a candidate, if they didn't know.
Kind things back to the CSEPs makes me smile. I know you can't see that, Heidi, but.
Sorry.
In my opinion, there needs to be a very explicit question regarding ELL. This district's ELL population and Hispanic population is going to explode in the next few years because of the meat plant that's coming in. It's inevitable, and we have to have the resources to support those students. So it's not a question on diverse students, it's a question on ELL students. Because if all those kids come in, we are not able to support them, our task force will tank.
Everybody had a chance to respond to that, I think?
And then, I guess I have a question. So regarding, you know, the more challenging curriculum in the high school, and more opportunities for advancement, blah de blah de blah de, is there any kind of accurate way to get the graduation rate of students who elect to go to a four-year, four-year university and see if they're making it through or not in like five years or six years?
Yeah, college follow-up, yeah.
Like, like to determine if they're actually graduating with those degrees or not?
Well, I think so. I think that's even part of the APL for just graduate follow-up. What's that?
I think it's only like one year, though.
The falls, uh, but I'll, let me dig, let me, let me find, I'll check with council department for all. I, I don't know.
I mean, I just.
Somebody like a pleader, pleader's in college.
Yeah, and Dave, I'm sorry, when you were, when you were going, it just kind of, well, how could we measure if something's being challenged? Well, if those students are going to a, a higher level, you know, university or post-secondary education, are they graduating or not? Well, one could make an assumption if they're not graduating, that could be driven because of the intense, how intense our curriculum is. That's not perfect. I mean, that's just one angle to look at it, but it's so, it's so, it's so difficult to measure. Got what you need there?
Yeah, I do. The last thing that I'm looking at is the stakeholders providing input on the most important traits and qualities that they hope to have in the next superintendent. And there's a list of 10 there, and then there's comments. So maybe we'll start with Beth this time.
I don't really have anything to add. I mean, I think this is exactly what we expect to see in that approachable. There is number one, kind of as expected, so I don't have anything else to add.
What's, what's most, most important for you?
For me? On that? Well, as I, as I said earlier, where is it on this list? Ability to bring out success in others, I think is really important.
Yeah, and then you had approachable as your second one, I think, that you talked about.
Yes.
Relatable, approachable.
Yes, yeah.
So that's an overlap there.
It is.
Connection. Austin, you wanna pick that next?
Yeah, I was looking at this one. Again, it very much mirrors what we all said as board members, right?
Yes.
So, again, you know, the ethics and integrity are, without that, you have nothing.
Pass it on to Kyle.
Yeah, so one that's new on this list that wasn't on ours, and, you know, personally, a lifelong continuous improvement goal of myself is calm during difficult situations. It's very, very difficult to master. Race under fire. Yeah. But it's important. It's so important as superintendent of the school district.
That's a good point. I appreciate that.
Heidi, did you wanna comment on that? Not that individual statement, but on that list?
Sorry, what?
Did you wanna make a comment on that, that list of statements?
No, I don't. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll let her out to you if I have a comment, I promise.
Okay. Mary?
Well, I think that those one and two are, we're probably one and two with us also, so. All, all of these things are very important, but, you know, as far as one and two, those are extremely important.
The last, last page is just, I, as the new superintendent, I would have loved this at any of my jobs. Just advice from the community. I, I think that's, that's golden. That's, that's some good wisdom there for the new person.
So, I'd like to speak to some of these.
Okay.
So, you wanna go round horn on these?
Sure, you wanna go first and sue?
Yeah, sure. So, one of the things that we didn't put on ours, and one on that really stuck out to me, is find ways to make decisions that always support what is best for our students and their learning environments. I mean, and there, that, that's, I mean, everything else about community, you know, community engagement, we kind of talked about. Your willingness to be a change agent, I think, you know, that's, you know, that's another one. I think that goes with it. But those two, I think, stick out to me because, you know, you know, again, I go back to evidence-based learning, finding ways to make decisions that always support the best for our students and learning environments. You know, change is hard, and that goes with the change agent. Change is hard. People don't like change. And so being able to introduce change into the environment and, and being a supportive person to make that happen, I think that is, these are two questions, I think. Whomever wrote these did an awesome job of, of coming up with something that we didn't come up with. So I, that, I appreciate that whoever wrote this.
Don't have to call anybody out specifically. Does anybody wanna add?
Yeah, so of these 10 questions, six of them have community in it. And of those, the one that sticks out to me personally is create healthy connections with stakeholders, stakeholders in our community, spend the time to learn those stakeholders, meet them, and then connect with them on their residency history and importance in our, in our community. I mean, I just, if you do that, your, your connection to the community, and how the community collectively works with the district is, will be solid.
We, we need a superintendent who's more than just who does the job here at school, but is also integrated into the seven groups and the, and the heart of the, the community.
I like this, be flexible and an open contributing member of the community. So I like that one.
Flexible is getting repeated a couple times.
Heidi?
I'm sorry, I cannot hit the unneed button on my phone when I'm looking at other things. Back to the flexibility again, I think we've all hit on that repeatedly, and it's just too important. And the size of our district. Yeah, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
The one thing I'd like to add, which hasn't been touched on any of this stuff, right? How, as a, as an individual, how do you take care of yourself? The reason I say that is, I'll tell the story. One night, Dave Buck was driving home from here, was so tired, ran his car off the roof. And that scared me in that because, you know, if we're working him so hard, that, and he's not, I mean, a superintendent having a heart attack, I mean, isn't doing us any good. Because now, you know, we're paying him, he ain't doing it anymore. So, you know, I'd like to know how a superintendent takes care of him or herself. Because, again, you know, if they're, if they're not taking care of themselves, they can't, it's hard for them to do the job. So I'd like, I'd like to just hear something about what they do to take care of themselves.
Is that a HIPAA violation?
I don't know about.
I, I wrote down work like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it probably was a HIPAA violation. But it's, he wouldn't care. But anyway, I mean, that did scare me. And, and it kind of made me reevaluate, you know, as we work with a superintendent, that we, we need to take care of him or her as a board. Because obviously, it's, you know, working, I mean, working them to death is, and then they're just gonna be retiring, and will be here back here again.
Sure.
You know, job burnout and stuff like that. You know, job burnout and stuff like that, so.
Very good.
I don't know, you might, has anything else they want to add that we did talk about? Just came to your mind? Okay, that one just came to my mind.
No, that was actually a really good one, Austin, and I'm glad you brought that up because it is something I thought about while we were going through this and then it kind of skidded my mind. We, I, I'm really glad you brought that up, thank you.
And this will be very helpful for us as we kind of customize some questions for all of you or for the whole process. So I'm looking at the, we'll get out the two applications that you haven't seen yet tomorrow. And we'll keep forwarding to as we get them completed. Um, the application period closes the 31st. And then we will be back with you on January the 5th, right?
That's correct.
To kind of go over those and decide if we're gonna move forward to that first Friday interviews.
Want to take a, back to questions to you then?
So here's why I'm struggling with all this process. I look at all these resumes, you know, and I'm not an educator. And so, you know, obviously they're, they're all very well-written. What should I be looking for as I'm reading these resumes to differentiate?
Good question. Just what we talked about tonight. You know, finding, you know, the qualities such as somebody who is proficient with the budget, somebody who's, who's had experience with construction, someone who can be a instructional leader, but then also fostering others to become instructional leaders. Um, you know, those, those kinds of experiences and qualities, the things that we hit on here today. Uh, you, you want to see if that candidate's resume mirrors some of the discussion or the discussion that we've had tonight? Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, we didn't, I mean, before tonight, I didn't have any of this.
Sure.
And so it's kind of like.
The school board.
But I just like.
And, and, and the opposite side is, is true, you know. If, if a candidate doesn't have those things, then that's somebody we're probably gonna rank as a, as a red or a yellow. Um, you know, being able to differentiate between, you know, the stronger candidates and maybe your weaker ones, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that advice. I'll go back and reread them and try to line up those filters too. So, yeah, okay.
So based on where we're at applicant-wise versus what you've seen in the area around the state, what's the final number that you think we're gonna end up in ballpark-wise?
It's real getting very close. I, I couldn't tell you a final number, but I will tell you that the closer we get to the deadline, the more and more people will, will hit submit. And, um, you know, the other thing is that we're, we're keeping track of who's in progress. Who hasn't submitted yet but has started, that's just as important too. And we will reach out, as, as we get closer to the deadline, um, we will reach out to those, those applicants and say, you know, do you have any questions? Um, I noticed that you started, but you haven't completed. Is there anything that we can do to, to help with that? So just to let them know that, that we recognize them and are encouraging them to, to hit submit.
We kind of remember that we intentionally chose a timeline to get folks winter break to work on their applications too, so wouldn't be surprised to see a lot come in at the end.
I would agree, and it, it takes time to get letters of recommendation for them to.
Yeah.
When is the last day to submit?
31st.
31st, yeah. Yeah.
Did you book on those things like I have to do the intervention?
Oh, I think it's pretty out. If I was told cough drop, I asked him if he's, he's intervention.
You see it.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
No, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 5-0.
You heard me.
6-0. All right. Aye, Heidi.